Special meeting agenda, this is our fiscal year 25 budget public hearing. It is August 28th, 2024. The time is 6:02 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks, Matari, and Duncan. Would you join us for a moment of silence, please? Thank you. And for our pledge, Finance Director Brandy Falcon, would you read it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. I'd like to thank you all for attending tonight's budget public hearing. Public engagement is paramount to this process and to our republic. Make sure you fill out the white sheet if you'd like to make public comment tonight on the three budgets being presented. All public comment will be civil and respectful, address the Board of County Commissioners, not the audience, address issues and not persons, refrain from applause as it interferes with due process, but do raise your hands if you are in agreement with the speaker. Concluding my remarks, we'll get into the FY 25 budget hearing pursuant to IDOC 311605, and we will start with our Aquifer Protection District, Nisha Mayani and Larry Sims.
All right. Thank you. So I am here to present the committee, the Policy and Budget Committee for the Aquifer Protection District, our budget recommendation for the district for 2425. As we do every year before we present the budget, we like to give the public a little bit of background on the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer and the Aquifer Protection District itself. The Aquifer Protection District was formed by the Board of County Commissioners in 2007 after approval by Cootney County voters for the protection of groundwater quality in the Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer. The B O C C appointed, or appoints, a policy and budget committee, and this policy and budget committee is charged with developing work plan elements, proposing methods of cooperation amongst agencies, and developing a budget recommendation. Uh oh. There we go. Oh, no. Okay. The Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer was discovered in 1895. It was formed during the Ice Age floods and consists of a deposit of large gravels, cobbles, and boulders through which groundwater flows. The formation is very highly permeable, so it's extremely vulnerable to land uses above and contaminant releases. The aquifer supplies water to more than 500,000 people over Cootney County and Spokane County. There's over 2,200 water wells in Cootney County. Sorry. Okay. The aquifer was designated federally as the sole source aquifer in 1978 because it supplies more than 50% of the drinking water in this area, and there's no more economical source of water in the area. The state of Idaho designated it as a sole source, or a sensitive resource aquifer in 1997, which this is the only aquifer in Idaho that has that designation. Panhandle Health District had a special rule set that they administered over the aquifer, which included the five acre rule, five acre septic rule, and the Critical Materials Program. The state swept that rule set away in 2021. In 2022, Cootney County adopted the five acre rule, and since that time, Panhandle Health District has been working very closely with both Cootney County and the cities within Cootney County to adopt the Critical Materials Program. The Aquifer Protection District is funded through an annual parcel fee that's charged to all of the parcels that are within the blue boundary to the left on the screen. The current parcel fee is $5.74 per year. The county is authorized to collect up to $12 per dwelling unit per year. Along with the parcel fee revenue, the county collects $100,000 per year from BNSF, and that is a condition of BNSF's conditional use permit for the Hauser Refueling Depot. Funding requests are accepted January through March of each year, and the Policy and Advisory Committee considers requests that are aimed at aquifer protection through assistance to regulatory bodies implementing educational programs and coordinating work of public agencies and stakeholders. About 80% of the funds go to Idaho Department of Environmental Quality and Panhandle Health District for their programs. DEQ's side, the majority of the funds go to their monitoring of the BNSF Refueling Depot, but they also assist with education and outreach and other just public technical assistance related to the aquifer. On Panhandle Health District's side, the majority of the funds go to the Critical Materials Program, which is where they are doing facility inspections of hazardous materials that are stored over the aquifer. They also have a sewer and stormwater management program and water quality sampling.
I might add that on the Critical Materials side of it, Panhandle Health primarily works through an educational process rather than a heavy-handed enforcement process, and I think that's a very positive thing and a good testimony to the work that they do.
All right. I'm trying to change the slide. Okay, there we go. So the remainder of the 20%, there was, for this fiscal year, there was five other programs that we recommended funding for. One was the Confluence Project. That's an educational program that is focused on water resources, and it's offered to 10th through 12th graders. The Spokane River Forum, they host what's called an H2O breakfast, and at that, there are speakers that talk about issues around both the Spokane River and the aquifer. The Waste and Recycle Directory is an educational website that tells where you can dispose of waste safely in order not to contaminate the aquifer. The Agromet Stations, they have four sites over the aquifer that are used to maintain or to properly basically dose irrigation over the aquifer. And then the last one, this is a new one, this year, the, there's a model update for the Spokane Valley Rathdrum Prairie Aquifer that we will be funding a portion of, and that is really focused on the Rathdrum side or the Idaho side versus the Washington side of things.
And will that, is that a boundary?
The model.
Study? Yeah, the model?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so in the first portion that we're funding, it's really data collection. There will be additional phases, so it'll be data collection on the Idaho side for inputs into the model. On, so the Advisory Committee also has internal projects. One, I guess one other item to note before we talk about the internal projects, Cootney County, there's 36,000 of the revenue that goes to Cootney County for administration, staff that supports the Advisory and Budget Committee. The remainder of that, so we've been working over the last couple years on, actually it's been a lot longer than that, but on identifying areas that are very vulnerable to contamination, which we refer to as sensitive aquifer recharge areas. There are the areas in red on the map to the right, but those are areas where surface water is basically being absorbed into the aquifer. So one of those areas is Hauser Lake, there's one at Rathdrum, and then one at Hayden Lake. So we've been working to identify the boundaries of those and develop a toolbox to protect those, and that toolbox will include education, the possibility of easements or land purchase in those areas, as well as the possibility for developing an ordinance for protection. So there's about 40,000 that we've budgeted for this fiscal year related to those areas. So in 2425, we received eight requests totaling $587,846. We're recommending funding for seven of those totaling $569,346. When we add that to our internal projects, that's $42,210, which takes us to a total budget of $611,556. That's down 13% from the prior year, but it does require us to use about $103,000 of our fund balance appropriation, and we've got about a million in the fund balance. And this is just the breakdown of that. So on the left is the fiscal year 24 budget, where we were at 7:02, and the fiscal year 25, where we're at that 6:11,056. And without take any questions.
Okay. Questions from Nisha? Questions, please.
My question isn't really geared towards the budget as much, but you mentioned the recharge areas, and we actually spoke the other day about that, and I think it's important that folks in the public know this, that these recharge areas where water goes into, from the surface down into the aquifer. And you had mentioned how there was a diesel truck that turned over and spilled.
Yeah.
And if that had happened to be near one of those recharge areas, we actually would have risked diesel contaminating our aquifer.
Yep. That's exactly right. Yes.
And that's how important what you're doing is to be thinking ahead about these things, so I really commend you for what you're doing, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So on that line item, it went from 140,000 just to 40,000. Is the 40,000 just for consultants, or is that for acquiring land or fencing or?
Yeah, so we had, I don't remember what the split was, but we were basically, we had a reserve. The majority of that, we anticipate, will be consultants, but wanted to have enough in there that we could navigate if we needed to talk about easements and whatnot. But it had gone from, in the prior year, we had 100,000 in there because we thought we were going to have to do LiDAR to better identify those areas, but we were actually able to use, there was a public source for LiDAR that was super helpful in doing what we did on the mapping, so that became unnecessary.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And you'll stick around for potential questions for public testimony?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Item two is our Cootney County Emergency Medical Services System, better known as KCEMSS, and we have Chief Jay Wunowski and Tracy Abrahamson, who's our financial director over there.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jay Wunowski. I'm the new EMS chief for Cootney County EMS. I've been here six months, and this is my first time going through this budget with the help of Tracy here, so I appreciate the opportunity to tell you what we're planning on doing this year. So just a quick overview of what we do. We contract with 10 fire districts in the county for EMS delivery. We have 11 ambulances, six, as you can see, are paramedic level ambulances. One is a part-time paramedic level ambulance here in the city of Coeur d'Alene, and we have three 24-hour EMT basic with an advanced level ambulances in the outlying agencies, and one part-time, basic, advanced level ambulance down in East Side Fire District. We are the sole provider for ambulances for 911 emergencies in the county, as well as interfacility transports within Cootney County, that's between medical facilities for folks that cannot go in any other means other than with an attendant in the back of an ambulance or that they need some kind of medical care. And we also offer long-distance transports in and out of our county. We have CCT, Critical Care Paramedics, that are specially trained to provide a higher level of care to transport these patients who are already being treated or need to be treated at a higher level than paramedics, and that's provided in basically everywhere in a county, and we also go outside of the county to pick up patients from Shoshone and also Benewah to provide that service. We also provide ALS intercepts, which are paramedic services, to other EMS systems when needed, and we do have contracts and coverages for the southern portion of Bonner County, because we do share a border, and we also receive coverage from Shoshone for the eastern section of Cootney County, and also Harrison, which is a nonprofit ambulance service down in the, just south of East Side, the city of Harrison. These are our partner agencies that we contract with and we provide service to in the entire county. So we have an ongoing capital replacement program. This year, we're estimating to spend $2,162,697, and that is to replace five ambulances. We are going to purchase three brand-new ambulances, and we're remounting ambulances. Right now, we're in the process of doing one, and we're going to do another one soon, and that's basically just putting a new chassis on an already-built box that we have in service to save us some money. Along with those ambulances, we need five power loads and five gurneys. Those are the, they go together so that our providers don't have to lift these heavy gurneys and patients, that it actually provides a lifting power for them to save their backs and other injuries. We're going to need to purchase heart monitors and nine Lucas CPR devices, CPR devices, excuse me. Those are CPR devices that prevent any kind of injuries or any other kind of, well, I'm sorry. It basically, it provides CPR at a constant rate and depth, and it's better than having a person do it, and we're looking at doing those. And then we have one last payment on our Motorola lease purchase for our radios. One of the things that we're doing with our partner agencies is a 3% cost of living increase to our partner agencies, and that's the amount of money that we provide to them every year to staff our ambulances, increased contract to our part-time ambulance by Coeur d'Alene Fire, and also with the new emergency room going in post-falls, we're anticipating some extra calls in that area, and so we are going to be planning for adding a new service or a part-time service in the future if the calls dictate that we need to do that. Our personnel expenses, an increase of $148,874, and that's for 3% increase to our employees, plus with our matrix steps for two employees meeting their step increases, and then one additional full-time position to help us with some areas that we have in our office. Our total proposed budget is $12,604,826. We are, out of the $2 million plus that we're going to spend on capital replacement, a million of that's going to come from our reserves, that's just over a million. The tax revenue that we receive are the $3,900,000. Our ambulance revenue, which we bring in from ambulance billing and insurance billing, and then the rest of this stuff is just regular impact fees and other interest. What we're requesting today is the 3% increase for our ambulance levy, basically, and all those other things break down to $191,054 is the increase, which translates into about $1.86 more per year for the annual $500,000 value of a home. So it goes from $36.70 per household basically to the $30, 38. That's our entire budget, basically broken down into what we're planning on spending this year, which is an increase of almost $2,000, I'm sorry, $2 million, and that's mostly because of those capital improvement or capital replacement items. And other than that, our board met and held a public hearing on 7/25, and they approved our budget. If there's any questions.
All right. Bill, questions?
How did you arrive at a 3% goal?
For our employees, that's basically an average from what, and I'm new to this, but basically an average every year that was, or asked about to provide to the employees just as an ongoing with their pay.
When I take a look at what Medicare is doing, that's kind of a big marker for me when I'm looking. We've had increases a little bit higher when Medicare was higher. We look at the cost of living actuals and projections based on that.
Just wondering, because our HR department here recommended 3.5%.
Okay. First, questions?
Are you noticing your calls for service are going up year over year? Is it shortening your capital replacement timelines because the vehicles are getting used more?
Yes. Back in 2015, we purchased 15 ambulances at the same time, and with the amount of hours on these ambulances, on the engines, and the mileage that we're putting on these, we're seeing a huge increase in repairs and that type of stuff, and it's mostly based on the call volume.
Yeah. And do you foresee sometime in the next year or two when you're going to have to expand and add another ambulance to your fleet?
It's quite possible, yes. We're anticipating that one ambulance over in the post-falls area due to the ER going in service, because we're, the ER does not accept Medicaid or Medicare, and so if patients arrive there and they need to be transported somewhere else, we're going to have to provide that transportation, and it will put an impact on post-falls area with ambulances if they end up taking up a lot of that call volume, or we'll have to pull ambulances from other areas of the county to kind of facilitate that. So we're, our plan is to monitor the data and how many calls we're going to get from that, and there's a specific point that will basically allow us or put us in a position where we have to put an ambulance in service.
Okay.
And that's about two calls a day.
And then the only other question, and I think it's fascinating, the fact that you're able to remount these ambulances, and for the general public, it's basically just lifting the body and putting a new chassis, new motor, drivetrain in there. How many times can you do that until you kind of exhausted that?
From what I've heard from different ambulance manufacturers, it can be as many as five times.
Okay. That's good. That saves a lot of money, doesn't it?
It does, because they, you know, the engine and the chassis is what really breaks down. The interior of the ambulance doesn't change much, except for maybe an air conditioning system or heating and ventilation type stuff in the back. The flooring gets replaced in those areas, but it does save a lot of money. It's about 35% I think savings.
Yeah, it's significant.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, and you'll remain for questions later?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Item three, this is our Cootney County FY budget presentation with our Finance Director Brandy Falcon and her assistant Arrow. I don't remember your, I don't know your new last name.
It's still Giddy.
Oh, it is still Giddy. Okay. So, all right.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brandy Falcon for the record with the Auditor's Office. I'm just going to do a brief overview of the proposed 2025 budget. So the budget is compiled of funding requests from all nine of our elected officials and the various departments that they oversee. Starting with a budget overview, over on the far left for FY 25, the total county budget right now is $131 million. It's important to remember that we like to separate solid waste out of our county budget because solid waste is not tax-funded. They are self-funded through their user fees and fund balance. So when solid waste is taken out by itself at $21 million, then there in the middle, you have our general governmental portion of the budget, which is $110 million. This is a snapshot of the preliminary summary. This is the spreadsheet that I use in our budget deliberation meetings throughout the summer with the Commissioners, so you're very familiar with this. On the left is FY 24's budget, and on the far right is the FY 25 proposed budget at a 2% tax increase, so you can see the year-over-year changes. I like to have this up as a reference, and I'll talk about this more, because we do not have the public defender as part of Cootney County's budget anymore going forward in FY 25. So you can see that last year, the public defender's budget was $6 million. So that's why, and then you can see last year, the governmental portion of the budget without public defense was $103 million. So then the general governmental portion of our budget is going up from $103 million point nine up to $110 million. So that's really the true year-over-year increase in general governmental funds when you're not taking into account that we had public defense last year. This is the summary of the budget by elected official. So when we include solid waste, the sheriff is 36% of the budget, the B O C C is 23% of the budget, and then the enterprise fund, solid waste, which is still under the B O C C, is 16% of the budget. When you take solid waste out, the sheriff is 44% of the total budget, and B O C C is 27% of the budget. Different challenges and opportunities that we dealt with this budget cycle. As always, our open positions are a challenge for us to deal with, so right now, we have 76 open positions countywide. That does not include public defender open positions because they are not part of the county in FY 25. This time last year, we had 96 open positions. The difference from last year to this year is primarily getting rid of those public defense positions. The three departments with the highest numbers of open positions are the jail, 911, and prosecutor. So the jail has 27 open positions, and when you consider that in relation to the total number of positions in the jail, 130, they have a 21% vacancy rate. 911 has a 35% vacancy rate, and prosecutor has a 13% vacancy rate. We're also budgeting for a health insurance increase this year to our health plan, so the county is paying for $447,000 of the increase to the health plan, and then we are passing off $119,000 of that increase to be paid with the employee's deductions for being on the health plan. So employee-only deductions are staying the same, but deductions for spouses and children are increasing. We also have a 29% increase in our ICRIMP policy. ICRIMP is the county's liability insurance policy. That increase is primarily, I'm told, due to increasing property values and the county acquiring more property. As I mentioned, with public defense, due to House Field 236, public defense is transitioning to the state of Idaho in FY 25. So the only thing the county is still required to pay for, we're required to provide office space for the public defenders. So the board chose to continue the lease at their current office location, so in FY 25, we're going to be paying $219,000 out of fund balance for their rent, and then $22,000 to the utilities for that building. For interest revenue, we're budgeting $4.5 million, which is a $500,000 increase over FY 24's budget, and then we're seeing flattening and decreasing state revenues. So our sales tax is being budgeted at a 1% decrease, which is about $44,000. Revenue sharing at a 0.4% decrease, which is $36,000, and then liquor at a 4% decrease, which is $175,000. The main reasons for the liquor decrease is, for the first time in 15 years, the liquor board is actually experiencing a loss in sales as well as sales volume. So revenues and sales volume are down statewide, and then Cootney County's liquor citations as a percentage of liquor citations statewide is down by 20%. This is an overview of the types of funds in our budget, kind of from a revenue perspective. So we have funds that are property tax-supported, such as our general fund and our justice fund, which is our largest special levy fund, and then we have a handful of other special levy funds that have statutory authority to levy property tax. This would be liability insurance, airport, county fair, noxious weeds, so on and so forth. The airport has not levied property tax for many years. They are self-supporting. We have other funds, our self-supported special revenue funds that are not tax-supported. They have their own restricted streams of revenue. That would be our vessel fund, E911, snowmobile, and Aquifer Protection. And then lastly, we have our enterprise fund, which is solid waste. So on the right, you can see the justice fund is 41% of our budget, general fund is 25%. fund is twenty-five percent, followed by enterprise and special levy funds at sixteen percent. So getting into budget increases, the board has approved. Right now, the board's approved a two-and-a-half percent COLA with a ca, a loaded cost of one point seven million, the COLA does not apply to elected officials, so the elected officials' wages will be staying flat in FY twenty-five. The board's also approved step progression for all employees at a cost of seven hundred and nine thousand, so employees will get their step, next step on the pay matrix on their step anniversary date, which is the date they entered their current position with the county. And then, we've also incurred savings on open positions of one point nine million dollars. So we saved one point nine million dollars by cutting open positions by fifty percent if they were open longer than one hundred days. Forty-one of those position, there were forty-one positions that got cut, almost all of them were in the sheriff's office, thirty-eight in the sheriff, one in appraisal, one in juvenile diversion, and then one design professional in community development. And then in terms of requests that the board received from departments this budget cycle, the board received thirteen requests for new positions for a total loaded cost of one million dollars. The board only approved six of those requests for a total loaded cost of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Out of those six approved positions, the airport and solid waste positions have no tax impact, so the FY twenty-five tax impact of those new positions is one hundred and two thousand dollars. The board also received forty-three requests for changes to existing positions for total loaded cost of four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. The board only approved thirty-one of those requests for total loaded cost of seventy-eight thousand dollars. And when I say loaded costs, that means the cost of the wages, plus retirement, benefits, and taxes that the county has to pay. Taking a look at our operating expense, also referred to as the B budget, the general governmental funds decreased by twenty-seven thousand dollars, primarily due to losing the public defender. So you can see there's a large decrease in the B O C C's operating budget, um, and that was from losing public defense. And then, solid waste's operating budget increased by one million dollars. Our capital budget, also referred to as the C budget, general governmental funds decreased by eighteen thousand dollars, and solid waste decreased by ten million. That's such a large decrease because last year's solid waste budgeted for a landfill expansion, which was like, like twelve million dollars, so it's a significant expense that only happens every ten years or so. This is how we calculate our property tax. So we start with our tax base, which is fifty-nine point eight million right now. We add on between one and three percent increase, well, between zero and three percent increase that the board chooses. We add on ninety percent of our new growth, eighty percent of any U R D returns, which we don't have any in FY twenty-five, and then we take out the replacement dollars that we get from the state of Idaho. And that gives us our FY twenty-five levy amount, which is sixty-one million dollars. At a two percent tax increase, that means the board would be leaving five hundred and nine, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars of forgone, of tax that they are not taking. On the right, you can see that the justice fund is, um, gets fifty-nine percent of our tax, our property tax, the general fund gets fifteen percent of our property tax, and then the third highest is district court at thirteen percent. This is just a snapshot of solid waste, our enterprise fund, so at the top, you can see the year-over-year change, um, in their expenses, and at the bottom, the year-over-year change in their revenues. Solid waste makes internal payments to other county departments for services that we provide to them, so that's that large negative number on the bottom. So you can see that in FY twenty-five, solid waste is paying nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to county departments, and that is essentially a direct, uh, offset of our tax burden in those other departments. Looking at our revenues, total revenues of a hundred and thirty-one million, of that, property tax is sixty-one point five million dollars. We're budgeting sixty-one point six million dollars in state funds and other fees, that's gonna be all of our state revenues, um, fees earned by county departments, as well as our interest revenue. And then we're also budgeting to use seven point eight million dollars of fund balance, and that is primarily all restricted fund balance with solid waste, and a little bit of restricted fund balance with our self-supporting special revenue funds that I mentioned, like vessel and E-nine-one-one and snowmobile. We also have a small portion of grant-funded personnel at seven hundred and fifty thousand, that is down from prior years, again, because of losing public defense, they had a significant amount of grant-funded staff, so our grant-funded staff is lower this year. This is a year-over-year comparison of property tax and non-property tax revenues, so our actual tax amount is decreased, is increasing, two point one million dollars over last year. Uh, you can see the property tax in dark green and the year-over-year change, and then the non-property tax revenues in gray. The spike in non-property tax revenues last year was due to, again, solid waste budgeting the really large landfill expansion project, they funded that with their own fund balance, and so fund balance counts as revenue in the budget, so that spike last year is due to solid waste using their funds to pay for that landfill, and then we're back to more normal ranges, uh, in FY twenty-five. So you can see that, um, property tax is forty-seven percent of total budgeted revenues. And then, non-tax revenues have decreased by eleven point five million dollars, primarily due to what I just spoke about, solid waste's fund balance going down, 'cause they're not paying for that large, uh, landfill expansion project, and then also, we've lost all of the sales tax and grant revenue that was funding the public defender. This is a year-over-year comparison of our expense categories, personnel is A budget, operating expenses are B budget, capital expenses are C budget. Again, you can see in the middle there, capital was a spike last year due to that landfill purchase, you can see that personnel, really, last year was eighty-nine million, FY twenty-five is gonna be eighty-nine million, it's deceiving because you have to remember that last year we included public defense. So if you take out the six million dollars of public defense last year, that gives you a true picture of the actual, like, six million dollar increase, um, in that section. So looking forward to FY twenty-five, um, as a county, our total ongoing personnel costs, our annual salary load is eighty-nine million dollars, that includes the one point nine million of savings from cutting those open positions, and that open position liability from those, cutting those positions is one point nine million dollars. As I mentioned, public defense, the transition that's taking place in FY twenty-four will incur the expenses for all the employee payouts as the employees leave, and then in FY twenty-five, we will only be paying their rent and utility payments. So, in conclusion, uh, Cootney County's total property tax amount for FY twenty-five right now is at sixty-one million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, which is forty-seven percent of our anticipated revenues. Personnel and labor continues to be our largest budget factor, personnel is seventy-six percent of our county budget and our largest ongoing liability. As a county, we continue to maintain healthy fund balance reserves, we, uh, have maintained two-and-a-half months of emergency reserves, and then we've also been able to utilize our assigned fund balance for, um, some of our large capital projects. We continue to be debt-free, and the auditor's office has been awarded for outstanding financial reporting since two thousand and twelve, from the Government Finance Officers Association for our budget book and our annual comprehensive financial report. And then lastly, um, all of our quarterly and annual, um, financial reporting, as well as this presentation and the budget book, are available on our website at this link. So I'll turn it back to the board for questions and discussion.
Okay. Questions, Bill?
Um, just for everybody's edification, can you explain what fund balance is? I mean, that's a, that's a, before people getting government or are familiar with county government.
The easiest way to explain, and fund balance, if you were a private company, it would be like your equity accounts or your retained earnings, the easiest way to think of fund balance is your savings account. So at the end of every year, we take all the money that we've earned and subtract all the money we spent, and any extra goes into fund balance.
And is there a recommended amount that should be in there?
Uh, the Government Finance Officers Association recommends, uh, between two and three months of emergency reserves, and then also having just good, clear, uh, policies over how you use any surplus, how you're gonna spend it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Bruce?
Yeah, on, uh, and thank you very much for putting this together.
You're welcome.
On your page, budget challenges and opportunities, you have open positions.
Yes.
Are these positions that we budgeted for, all or partial?
Um, sorry, I must have skipped.
Or do they include frozen positions?
Um, then, yes, the number of positions open, that is gonna include if, um, any of the fifty percent positions that in FY twenty-four. Uh, out of the seventy-six that are open, I don't know off the top of my head how many of those are funded at fifty percent. Um, I can tell you that all of the nine-one-one positions were funded at fifty percent, and probably at least half of those jail positions are funded at fifty percent.
Yeah, okay, so they're basically, they're in the budget, but they just, they may be all or partially funded.
Yeah.
And that's what you use for that.
Yeah, usually the jail and nine-one-one, almost all of their open positions are cut by fifty percent.
Okay.
So right there, I can tell you, I know those are not fully funded.
Okay, and then on your, uh, page fund overview, which is a couple pages later, um, you just mentioned self-supported special revenue, and I think it's probably important to just delineate that a lot of that is for capital and not necessarily for staffing, so like...
Correct.
Yeah.
So like vessel.
Yes.
Um, they receive their own revenues from the state of Idaho and from other boater fees, um, and then they do their best to save as much of that as they can, yes, for large capital projects.
Yeah.
So that they are not, people, departments with their own restricted revenue like that, they rarely use general fund balance, they use their own restricted fund balance.
And same thing for nine-one-one, we, we collect a fee for that, but it can't be used for salaries, it's just for infrastructure.
Correct, our E-nine-one-one can only, there are statutory requirements around how we can use that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. So, we are now to our public testimony portion, and I think we have a stack of folks who would like to speak. Okay. All right. All right, and I apologize if I get your name butchered. All right, Karen Ailes wishes to speak but did not mark which, um, budget. Karen, do you still wish to speak? Okay, come on up to the podium, please.
You have to turn the microphone on.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions first that I'd like to know, um, the answers to. When you were talking about the Rathrum, I think you called it the A, what was it called? The, the water system?
The Aquifer Protection District.
Why, um, do we also share that water with Spokane? Is that a federal mandate, or is there a purpose in that?
Um, I, I can answer that unless Nisha wants to. Uh, so, it's geography, so it flows down to the Spokane River, and the Spokane River flows to Spokane, that's how come it's five hundred thousand for the aquifer resource. So, we can't put a dam or anything and stop that flow, so that's just the geography, how that happens.
Okay, and, um, do they help with that paying those, whatever expenses are needed for, for u, using that?
They, they do not, so just all the residents who live over the aquifer, um, designated area, they pay the five dollars and seventy-four cents per year to fund those programs.
Um, and then, the other question I had is, um, uh, regarding the EMS, which are very vital, of course, um, I wanted to know why, um, each city doesn't have their own EMS service, like Post Falls, Rathrum, Bennett, wherever, why aren't they funding their own EMS? Instead of Cootney as a county, uh, paying for everything?
Sure, so, it's a little bit technical and complicated, Chief Jay, would you like to take a run at it, or you want me to start? Go ahead, push, oh, and Larry can help too, uh, if you wanna push your talk, there you go, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, you have the history. Yeah, several years ago, that was exactly the case. There were several different ambulance agencies. Spirit Lake had one, Arrow Ambulance was a for-profit in Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls had a volunteer ambulance, um, there were several quick response units around with no ambulances, Eastside, Howser Lake, um, and, and like that. At one point, Arrow wasn't making money, so they went away. The volunteer agencies became non-volunteer and joined together to provide EMS services. And, the county set up a county-wide EMS that was its own separate thing, they had their own people, everything. That basically fell on its face, they went bankrupt, and, so the county was looking at, what are we gonna do? Basically, we received an offer from AMR over in Spokane, and we looked at the cost and the amount of ambulance service that they would provide, and it didn't make sense. So the fire districts got together and says, hey, we can do this. So what happened was, the county set up its EMS, County, Cootney County EMS, and the fire departments provide the personnel, okay, they provide the paramedic. The EMS system reimburses portions of those salaries, not the entire salaries, but portions, and I think it's important to mention that because fire department personnel, they do EMS and they do fire, eighty percent probably what they do is EMS, maybe more. But, the salaries are not paying for fire suppression that the EMS system reimburses in form. Does that help?
Yes. And I will add that EMS is also their own taxing district, so Cootney County, um, is not, the county itself is, that's not part of our taxing, they're their own taxing entity, just like the Coeur d'Alene School District, just like the city of Coeur d'Alene, just like highway districts, they're their own taxing entity.
Okay. Um, so, m, my concern is, um, and I, and I definitely think there are certain things that definitely should be funded well, that would be the EMS, fire department, the police, the sheriffs, safety is extremely important. However, um, I think that, when I hear that, you know, they want three or three-point-five percent increase on, on a budget or, or whatever, I don't think that, I think you're, the people think about the government as being, needing all of this, uh, ben, these benefits, because when you look at widows and the senior citizens in your county, and there's a lot in Coeur d'Alene, um, we are constantly being, um, taxed. I don't get an increase in my Medicare, or my health insurance, or my property taxes, or my gas and electric bills that are going exponentially outrageous, or the food prices that I'm having to buy, and then, um, and then, the government wants more. And I think that sometimes you don't think about the little persons that pu, that are putting people in, in office. And I know that sometimes, and I've been to other, uh, things like this, not this particular one, but when people say, you know, they're for this, and they're gonna stick to that, but then they get into the middle of government, they're giving themselves raises when they shouldn't be giving themselves raises. My healthcare, like I said, my taxes, um, all of those things are, um, on a strict budget, very hard to keep paying, and so, I, I hope that when you consider, I don't know if this is in, you know, in firm, and this is gonna happen, or if this is gonna be voted on, but, um, I think that, especially when I hear step progression, you know, when I was working many years ago as an RN, we didn't, uh, we didn't get step progressions, it was merit progression, and so, um, just because you work for the government doesn't mean that you're doing the best job ever, and that you should just get, continue to get step, uh, progression. I think everything should be on a merit, and, um...
Ma'am?
Yes.
I don't mean to cut you off, there's a three-minute time limit.
Oh, okay.
And because we had other speakers with that.
Uh, that's fine.
I just wanna be respectful of everyone else because...
Okay.
We can't be here till midnight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, but thank you so much.
What is the time limit?
Three minutes, yep. Yep. Bill Breezy wishes to speak.
Hi, yes, my name is Bill Breezy. I am a resident of Cootney County, and we're, I'm here to talk about the, the license plate readers that the sheriff has included in their budget. And we don't want license plate readers. There's, you know, there's people around that have these little license plate covers over the license plates, and including one of the commissioners here. And so there's ways to get around it. Why spend that money for, it's going to be used for tracking and tracing and all this other stuff, and, and, and you can get away with it by putting this, this plate on there? You know, and I'm also concerned that there's a commissioner that is also a special deputy. Now, when he approves the sheriff's budget, is he approving it for the sheriff or for the, for the residents that he has been elected by? You know, it's just, you know, it seems like there's a conflict of interest, you know? So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'd like to address that, if I may. You're referring to myself, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay. So first of all, it is true that I have something on my license plate. And let me tell you something, where you come from, where I came from, after nine eleven, the city I lived in turned into a surveillance state. I absolutely despise the fact that we have become a surveillance state in so many different ways, okay? License plate readers are just one small slice of that. To me, that is my way of protesting it, okay? If I get a ticket for it, then I get a ticket for it. And I'll have to decide if I want to get a ticket, or how many tickets I'm going to get until I change that, just like you can, okay? So let me explain, that is the state of, of our country, and I don't fully appreciate that, okay? Now, I will say that there's another side to it, which you haven't addressed, and that is the potential for safety, for solving crime, for stopping crime in progress, which you've never talked about. You have, and I'm curious, we might have an opportunity to discuss the statistics associated with that. The balance, of course, is in how we manage that and how we protect the privacy of, of citizens, okay? But with respect to that license plate issue, like I said, it's my way of protesting that, okay? And, you know, I, I absolutely do not support a surveillance state. You never asked me that. You've come to many other meetings, you've never actually proposed that question or said, you know, Bruce, can I speak to you about that? With respect to...
You didn't know about this until a couple days ago.
Yeah, well, and that's part of the problem, is that, you know, people get whipped up into a frenzy, and they don't get all the facts, they don't talk to people, they don't get points of view and policy and things like that. With respect to the special deputy status, I've never run from that, and I've never hidden that, okay? And the fact is that I have a fiduciary to you, the citizen, as an elected official. These budget meetings are held in the open. You have access to a lot of the same information that I do, if you want to, okay? There's nothing secret about the process, okay? What my job is, is to figure out how to triage many of the asks, many of the requests throughout the county government, and figure out which ones are going to serve you best. And that's why we have this discussion. So I, I appreciate your concern, but it just concerns me that you don't even take the time to speak to the people who, I presume, you work hard to help get elected, and then ask them, well, what's your policy on this? What do you think about that? What about this? How would you address these other issues? So I take a little bit of offense just picking on a particular commissioner because there's something you don't like, without actually taking the time to speak to that commissioner and understand where they're coming from. Thank you for your comment, and I appreciate it.
Okay, but, you know, the cameras are just the cameras. That's what we call hardware. It's the software that I'm worried about. How do you control the software? How do you control the privacy of all the data that you're collecting? And, and, you know, these cameras will have automatic updates, you know, for new software that comes in, and who knows what's on that software? You have no way of controlling that.
You bring...
And that's, that's my issue.
And you bring up a great point, and let me encourage you, don't make this your last stop. You need to start going to all the different city council meetings because they have their own cameras. You need to go down to Boise because the state has their own cameras. And my door is always open for you to come in and talk to me about how you want this community to look, so we can develop policies that achieve that end goal. But it begins with understanding what people want, so that I can develop policies based upon that. And you don't make any effort to sit down and talk with me, so I can focus on those policies. You focus more on criticizing me. And so all I ask from this point forward is that you feel comfortable enough to contact me, sit down with me, tell me what it is that you want to see as an end game, and then we can start talking about policy to achieve that. And like I said, don't make this your last stop. I hope to see you at Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, and down in Boise to talk to them about these license plate readers among other surveillance state equipment that you may have an issue with.
We have met with CDA, the Transportation and the Police Department, so we have been doing that.
Okay, well, you know, it's, it's a long process. It didn't happen overnight, and it's going to take a little while. But I would certainly appreciate you at least extending me the opportunity to have that discussion with you, before you start kind of criticizing in, in some way, shape or form, an elected official, whose door is open almost any time for you to come in and let's talk about where you want to be and how we can develop good policy from there. So I really appreciate it.
Ron Hartman wishes to speak.
Apologize for my voice. This is with regards to the transit center. It's in the county budget. It looks like for next year, it's six-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. Last year, it was three-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety, three-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-six. All county property owners are being taxed for bus service that were not provided. So we're being taxed for something that we're not receiving the service. It would only take two of the three commissioners to approve this bus service to make runs to Spokane. I don't think any of us want to see bus service going back and forth to Spokane. You hired two more people this year for the transit system. Next year, you are planning a new maintenance building and mechanics, so the budget will grow again. The current proposed org chart has two layers of management for a total department of seven people. This much management for so few people is very inefficient. The county needs to completely get out of the transit center and remove all costs from the budget. This would reduce the tax levy and help us that are retired. Thank you.
I'd like to address that one too, if I may. Mr. Hartman, I really appreciate your comments. And, you know, it is true, they, there is an attempt to add two more positions there. I disagree with the multi-level, levels of management. And my proposal, which I've already made before this board, is to discuss with the cities, a joint powers agreement, so that the cities can take this over, and we can take it out from the umbrella of county government. Because I agree with you, the, the greatest benefit, beneficiaries from this program are the cities.
Yep.
They should be managing this, and they should be putting in the money necessary to do it.
They should be covering the cost of it.
That's right. And I agree with you, and this is one of those things that we're going to continue to have conversations with. I've already spoken with a couple of cities about this. They are open to having that conversation. And so if there are other folks that are interested in this subject matter, I would be very happy to speak with you. But this is not a state mandated service for the county, and I don't understand why the county took it on to begin with.
Well, it was taken on before you were a commissioner.
Yes, well, I'm going to do my best to, to get it out from underneath that umbrella, so thank you.
So, all right, thank you.
And Brandy, there were some numbers thrown out that I'm not familiar with. So according to the numbers I have, for fiscal year twenty-four, it's going to be under two-hundred-thousand dollars for transit, and...
I'm looking at this, and I'm going down the left-hand column, the Federal Transit Authority, and I'm going all the way over to the last column that says fiscal year twenty-twenty-five tentative budget, and it's six-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-four.
So that is state funds and other funds, that is not property tax dollars.
Yeah, but it's been over two million roughly, if I remember correctly, since like, since its inception.
That included RMO.
Regardless of the amount, we're paying for a service we're not receiving, regardless of whatever amount it is. We're being taxed for a service we're not receiving. And that's not fair. The people that use the service should pay the full amount, and that's the cities. There's no bus stops out where I am.
Right.
There's no bus stops anywhere in the county.
So are you for sure aware that no one in the, who lives in the county, isn't dropped off at the bus station to get to their final destination? Are you sure that no unincorporated resident uses it?
I don't think that's my obligation to figure that out.
No, but my point is that...
I think that's your obligation to figure out.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Wolf wishes to speak.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Wolf. I was born here in Cootney Hospital. My husband and my children are Coeur d'Alene tribal members, so my family's lineage goes back thousands of years. I'm here today because I want to talk about the license plate readers. The primary and most cited reason for the use of license plate readers is stolen vehicle recovery. Studies and reports from the International Association of Chiefs of Police and RAND Corporation repeatedly mention stolen vehicle recovery as one of the most immediate and measurable benefits of LPRs. The likelihood of any individual person in Cootney County experiencing a motor vehicle theft is about zero-point-zero-six-three percent, according to the data that I have pulled from the two-thousand-twenty-three crime in Idaho report from the Idaho State Police. So the likelihood is approximately one in one-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-three that someone in Cootney County would have their car stolen. On the other hand, there's approximately a fifty-six-point-six chance that at least one person on a typical block in Cootney County is using drugs. Investing in something that is clearly needed now, like more drug enforcement in Cootney County, would, would significantly benefit our community, especially given the twenty-point-one percent rise in drug-related charges from two-thousand-twenty-two to two-thousand-twenty-three. I urge our elected officials to respect the values of our community in avoiding turning Cootney County into a mini-California. We are not facing the same challenges, and we shouldn't waste our tax dollars on unnecessary measures. Let's focus on solving the real existing problems that we have today, rather than investing in hypothetical scenarios, hypothetical scenarios, and investing in, in overreliance on technology. This is not a fiscally conservative approach, and our community deserves better stewardship of its resources. We have all seen the aftermath of what happens in the name of safety whenever the operating from the government agency. And I and others in this room should not lose our right to privacy in the name of safety, especially, like you had said, Bruce, how you don't agree with it either. So I think the majority of Cootney County, me speaking as, you know, somebody that grew up here, somebody that's from here, somebody that has very deep roots in this community, that this is not something that we believe in, and it's not something that is needed. I suggest that we put our resources where they are needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, no, keep your, thank you for your hand raises. Thank you. Lynn Frazan wishes to speak.
Commissioners Brooks and Matarri, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I am coming here as a concerned citizen of Cootney County regarding Sheriff Norris, Norris' request for license plate readers. I am asking that you vote against these readers and the violation of people's rights to privacy in this county that you serve. A person's right to travel freely across this nation without worrying of a surveillance state similar to that of China or the former USSR is something that we, as constitution-loving Americans, have taken for granted for far too long in this country. It must stop here. This is the last bastion. As this is a slippery slope, it will only get worse with time. There is also the question of other communities in California and across the country that have had citizens groups formed specifically to come against data collection from these readers. Our, excuse me, our future will include when, not if, there will be data breaches of the personal data collected from these license plate readers will be stolen by hackers and used for various crimes against the very citizens whose rights are not being protected. I'm asking you to please vote no on these license plate readers this evening. Thank you.
Stephanie Wolf wishes to speak.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Wolf. I live in Post Falls. I'm not going to get into the nuts and bolts of everything regarding the request for the license plate readers. I do know that we in Cootney County are a freedom-loving, liberty-loving group. We do not want to be surveilled. All of a sudden, we have cameras at every intersection, and we were told, oh, well, you know, that's going to help things, and whatever the, I don't want to use the word excuse was, but I think we were kind of given, well, we were told that everything would be okay. So now we are told that the sheriff's department wants the license plate readers, one more step of surveillance. We don't want that. We want to be able to travel freely. We don't want someone to know our every move. And now that I have found out just recently by reading some of these documents, our data will go to federal agencies, like the FBI, intel agencies has access to it? We don't need that in Cootney County. And I don't want my data all over the place, and even AI being able to access it, or someone saying they're doing research. Those agencies have no business. And I think that there's something Idaho statute forty-nine-dash-two-oh-three prohibits the release and use of personal information obtained through motor vehicles, but that it's so broadly written that our personal data isn't protected. So it sounds to me that this, you're jumping the shark here. This is not ready to go through. Our personal protection should be number one. And again, the, the crime in Cootney County does not justify something like this. I was also thinking back to the May election, and the sheriff's department put out this flyer, and I thought, oh, that's really cool. Republican call to action. Join our front line against the establishment. I'm sorry, but I can't think of anything more establishment than giving our personal data to the FBI. What does this mean? And how long has all of this been in the works? Has it been in the works for a long time? The, the license plate readers? Was it prior to this flyer? I think it's questions that maybe we all need answers to.
Thank you. Amy McCamley wishes to speak.
Hi, I'm a resident of Cootney County. I want to kind of first address that there's been just a lot of chatter on Facebook and social media, and I know I was thinking for myself and a lot of people that I've been talking to, there just seems to be this divide right now in our community, that if we're against the license plate readers, we're against the sheriff and the department. I want to make it very clear coming from myself and many, many people I talk to, we are for the sheriff and the sheriff's department, as long as they're protecting our freedoms. So this has nothing to do with being against any particular person. We're not accusing that the sheriff's department is going to take this information and give it to the FBI, or do anything nefarious with it, or anything like that. The problem is, what's going to happen when the next sheriff gets in, or the next deputies get in, or something changes, our mandates gets in? Things will just be constantly changing, and we can't trust that. I would think from two-thousand-twenty, we all learned, in the name of safety, how many policies were put in place in the name of safety? So in the name of safety, we closed off our perks. And we had a young mom with her friends right here in Moscow, Idaho, in addition to this happening all over... her friends, right here in Moscow, Idaho, in addition to this happening all over, but right here in Idaho, a mother was arrested for being at a park with her children, because in the name of safety, she couldn't be there. So our same police officers, who are sworn to protect, like, the innocent, like Stephanie said, are the same officers who, at times, because they're getting pressure from above, are arresting innocent people. So, yeah, we do feel like this could be used to not only catch the bad guys. Of course, we want our officers to be safe. But at the end of the day, when you take that oath to be a police officer, when you choose to marry a police officer, you know their life is in danger every single day, no matter what. So this isn't about us not wanting officers to be safe. We want them to be safe, but not at the risk of taking away our safety and our freedoms. So we think, I think we need to look at the bigger picture. Again, we've broken up so much of what's happened since 2020. And just about six months ago, we were trying to put in a traffic management center in Post Falls. Because of the name of safety, it was supposed to get officers there quicker, you know, in case there's an accident, and this, that, and the other, and help with the traffic flow. The community showed up, and they didn't want it. So this is going along those same lines. So I'm asking you to really look into it. This isn't about just, can we fit it into the budget? And if there is that extra money, I think I just saw on the budget that our police officers' families are now going to have to pay more towards their insurance, when these officers aren't even making that much money? So let's take that money and give it back to those families, so they're not having to have an increase in their insurance. And let's continue giving these officers raises, so that we don't lose them to Spokane and to other big cities, like I keep hearing from everybody. So thank you.
All right. Rochelle Otten.
This comment is regarding the KCSO's request for 40-plus license plate readers and five-year or any length contract to track the vehicles all the time. This is straight out of 1984. We need to get rid of the Big Brother surveillance cameras that we already have, not add more, and certainly not add more capabilities, and sharing with, I've heard something like 800-plus agencies, possibly foreign governments and NGOs. The proper role of government is to protect the people's rights. These constant surveillance technologies will inevitably lead to harming good citizens and tyranny for the masses, even if the requesters have good intentions now. There is no way around it, until all mankind become angels, and then we certainly won't have any use for these invasive technologies. We should not give up our liberty for our little promised safety. There should be no license plate readers and no contract. Please vote against them and any other mass surveillance scheme. Thank you.
All right. Jim Harbin wishes to speak.
Hi, Commissioners, welcome. Good evening. Real quick question, Commissioner Matarie, you said you came from a severe surveillance state. What was that state, sir?
It was Washington DC. After 9/11, they popped up more cameras, more license plate readers. If, and this is a quote from a state employee, they called it the People's Republic of Maryland. They had speed cameras, they had red light cameras, they were all designed to send you tickets in the mail and fine you. And, you know, at some point, you see these things, and it's not the America I grew up in.
And that's DC next to Virginia Langley?
Washington DC, right outside Virginia and Maryland, yeah.
So anyway, I want to say I agree with everyone who has spoken about the cameras, wholeheartedly. I have a little bit more to add to it. First of all, in the last three years, I noticed that all the intersections, there were two, and then there's like four, and then a lot of intersections, they have eight. Some of these cameras are military-grade, 5G weapons, not all of them, but a few of them are. So now you have eight cameras on these intersections, which is totally Big Brother. Now you've got the license plate readers. I don't really see the need for that. I think that that money could be spent on having a solid night patrol in Hayden, because we don't have any night patrol. When I call, I get a, I get a, I believe your name and number. I talked to a lady the other day, she got that even from 911. And I understand we only have three units live for the county through the night. We should have at least a half a dozen and one in Hayden. If there's needed, command staff are fully qualified through Post, they can respond, they can get out of their offices for an hour or two a day and do patrol. You have detectives, you have inter-agency assistance program, Court of Lincoln Command, Post Falls, State Police, they're covered. You have plenty of people during the day. We need to have a little bit, we need to have double the coverage at night that we do. People can get out of their office and exercise their abilities to do law enforcement. We don't need, we don't need to spend this money on that. We need to spend their money on proactive law enforcement, not reactive. Okay? So I probably have some other things to say, but I can't think of them at the moment. Thanks for your time.
You know, I'd like to address that, too.
One last thing.
Sir, I'd like to address that, too, because you bring up some good points.
The thing about it is, is this. The cameras, all of them, so I spoke to someone in law enforcement authority, I won't say where, or where, or who, I'm just going to say this. The only cameras that the sheriff's monitor are at Honeysuckle and 95. So that means all the cameras are being monitored by three-letter agencies. Now, our sheriff, who has extensive background in fighting terrorism, he has 10 years of working with the three-letter agencies, his last 10 years. So he can tell you who's monitoring those cameras. And I, for one, I'm very outspoken, so I can guarantee you this, that the three-letter agencies would probably like to drop me. Okay? And I don't want them knowing when Jim goes down to Costco's or Super 1, so they can set up a phony, you know, accident, or pop me with a heart attack gun, or a stroke gun, that people don't know the CIA and the FBI have, or any other things they can, okay, nefarious activities. They don't need that. Myself and my father, and all the way back to George Washington, Martha Custis, my relatives, have been warriors for this country, and I'm not going to live in no Nazi state, period. How many hands I got? All there are. Right. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the comment that the gentleman talked about when it came to proactive policing. I'd love nothing more than to see that myself. The reality is that the sheriff's office has been so underfunded on their staffing for so many years.
Put the money towards that.
Do you know how much money we're talking about for the issue you're talking about? Do you have an idea, Amy, how much money we're talking about for the camera?
Let's not do this.
About $25,000. That's it. Okay? We have been working diligently the last year and a half to get the patrol deputies to 3% behind Coeur d'Alene, and I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. We were hemorrhaging qualified staff, that your tax dollars were used to recruit and train people for them to leave. Okay? So, you know, it's easy to have a headline, it's easy to say, if I could wave my magic wand. These are things that took years to get to where they were, and it's going to take years to get out of them. So I just want to put things into perspective a little bit. I agree with what that gentleman said. I would love for us to be in a situation where we could proactively police this community, but we've been fighting a staffing shortage for years, and we're finally starting to make progress with it. And I'll talk about that more. Thank you.
Scott or Sherri Schofield?
Hi. So I just kind of heard about this meeting at, what time did you text me? About 9 o'clock this morning? I was in China, I mean, California, working and trying to earn a living to pay my taxes, so you can raise the budget. So, so she told me what the meeting was about, and so, being that I had an hour and a half on the airplane, I did a quick search on what the cameras are, because I know about them somewhat, but I don't know exactly what the history is and stuff. And, you know, I like to, you know, thank our law enforcement for what they do for us. And, you know, for a while, I've had to, I've had to have the deputies out to my property, because I had a pesky neighbor for a number of times. And so I do appreciate their service. But using these devices, to what extent do we need to go to that for the, for the big picture? Let's look at the big picture here. One thing that comes to mind is the Patriot Act. You know, we had the Patriot Act, and what else did that, what else did we compromise by, by that Patriot Act? And I kind of feel like this is a similar feeling to that. So as I was sitting on the airplane, on here, I started doing some quick research online and looking up some tech, tech surveillance companies. And, and one of the things that I found quite alarming, as many of us know in the 2020 election, how the voting machines were mysteriously connected to the internet. Well, apparently, these devices can be connected to the internet. And these companies, these security researchers have gone to these companies that develop these cameras, and have been telling them, you know, what are you doing to secure these? Because, as we all know, over the last five years, how many security breaches have we had on major companies? I think Alaska Airlines just had a breach last week or two, right? And so, so obviously, that's a big concern for me, is that these cameras are getting used. You know, I kind of thought maybe there was going to be possibly a presentation here to know more about, you know, what these things do, and answer some of the questions that we have. You know, where is this going? Is this going to a cloud? Can all these be linked together to the three, three-letter agencies? Is it, you know, I, when I, I travel every week, and I don't even go up there, they want to take a picture of me when I'm getting my boarding pass. I said, no, you've got enough information, and I'm not going to give you my picture. So it's like, well, it's, it's just here and gone in 24 hours. Well, what about this data? How do we know that this data isn't stored for a long time? I looked on, I looked online, and, and all these countries that, all these, well, yeah, they're almost countries now, but all these states that, you know, have this mass security of the cameras, their, their storage is all over the board. There's no continuity, there's nothing. And so, it raises quite alarm to me, honestly, that, you know, what, where is all this, where is all this going? And there's a lot more questions that need to be answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Turner wishes to speak.
Hi, Sandy Turner from Hayden. I just want to support all the speakers who have just reported, and to remind the sheriff's department and the commissioners that we have stood before. We, we started with two people with the transportation effort to put up a $6 million building, and then we ended up with 300 there. And we just let you know at that time where we stand. The part about any federal government agency of any sort being involved, that's just the opposite of what we're moving forward to, to pull itself out of government funding. Every time Governor Little accepts all this money, we know we're slaves. And we keep being slaves as long as we accept federal money or connect us with federal. So that's what I wanted to add to what everyone else said. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? I have a couple written comments to go through, and the telephone, focus on the telephone. Anybody else in person who wants to speak? Okay. All right. I think we have a few people on the telephone. I know you're not going to know which one. Let's go, just somebody speak out, and then I'll try to get you in order. Anyone on the phone? All right. Well, if somebody on the phone does wish to speak before the end of public testimony, please just let me know. Tammy Porter. Whereas KCSO has no policy for protecting the safety of the personal data ALPRs will be collecting, and no Idaho legislation regulating the ALPRs collection of our personal data, I oppose the Motorola contract in KCSO's budget proposal. And Janice Rogers. I am concerned and opposed to police tracking people by their license plates and cameras on various roadways, on every car that passes by. This is a clear attack on my freedom of movement without government interference. All right. Is there somebody on the phone who wishes to give public testimony?
And Janice Rogers.
You'll need to mute your YouTube in order to speak to us.
They just don't read what we need to say.
Is there somebody on the...
I typed in.
You will need to mute YouTube?
We are on.
It's not about...
Okay. Are you wishing to give public testimony?
Yes.
Okay. What is your name?
Damian McCullough.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, my question is, is we decide to vote for these budgetary issues, I mean, the, the, the things that cause the expansion in the budget, mainly the growth in population, mainly the, the new developments, how are things going to be built out? I mean, you know, it seems as though, you know, traditional citizens and existing housing are being asked to pay the piper for new developments that are coming in, causing the need for the increase. So how is that going to be divvied up?
All right. Is that just your question for the board?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll take a stab at that. I think that's a great question. And, you know, one of the problems is, in Idaho, is you have to understand the system, the system of our government. Right now, growth does not pay for itself. It doesn't. You know who pays for growth? You do. That's the way the system is in Idaho. Now, since I came on board as a county commissioner, I've been working diligently with the other commissioners to try to get an impact fee implemented. You cannot imagine how poorly the state statute was drafted for our impact fee. We can only levy an impact fee on items that last 10 years or more. We collect the money. If we don't spend it within eight years, guess what? We give it back. It's insane. The previous board hired a consulting firm to come up with a levy for the, for the jail. $551. I did the math. Two-thirds blend residential, one-third blend commercial. Within eight years, if we had a $15 million expansion for the jail, we would need 18,000 more homes and 21 million square feet of commercial space, the equivalent of about 105 supercenter Walmarts, in order to generate enough impact fee to cover a $15 million jail expansion. We already have two pods that are, that are shells built up, and we're completing the interior of those two pods. We're looking at $9.5 million to just complete the interior. You pay for the growth. Now, if you really want to be helpful, and I encourage every citizen to join this board, join me, we're having an impact fee discussion next week. We actually had to hire a new consultant, because the one that developed the methodology probably would not withstand scrutiny, legal scrutiny. And we don't want to be in a situation where we're collecting a fee, and then a developer or someone else sues us, because we can't legitimately substantiate how we arrived at that fee, and then have to give the money back. So we hired a new consultant. They came out with a new fee. The good news is, is that it's over $1,000 per unit. So that will help us. But I encourage the citizens to join me, join this board, in helping to get this impact fee implemented. There's other growth fees that, that the county can look at, and try to get the cities, work with the cities, so that we can capture this fee, so we can mitigate some of this tax burden that you, the citizens, are left to pay for because of the growth. And one of the other things, too, is that you should be demanding, I ran on this, that I want to find ways to mitigate growth in this county, so that we know what we want to be when we grow up. That it's not every time you drive out in the prairie, and, and after a big rainstorm, the new crop is tract housing. That's one of the reasons why I was a proponent of the open space bond. You do not need classrooms for open space. You do not need bigger roads for open space. You don't need more jail beds for open space. It will save you more money in the long run to buy that open space and never, ever develop it. And so, the gentleman on the phone, I completely sympathize with his situation. And so, the gentleman on the phone, I completely sympathize with his situation, the question, and I have worked diligently, I have tried to get the word out to people. That is how we mitigate our taxes, is we develop efficiency within the government, and we control the growth model so we don't get stuck with these big tax bills. Again, I'll talk a little bit about that with some other taxing jurisdictions and what they are looking at doing this year that fortunately this board worked diligently to avoid. Thank you for the question.
When is the meeting?
Next Tuesday, I believe it is 11? We'll double check, we'll get that for you.
So it's not a status update, it's a different meeting?
This is a, the Impact Fee Advisory Board, because we're going to talk with them about the new fees. So I was planning on attending that to address any questions, but, you know, having the, the citizenry there to talk about that, express their concerns, is extremely important. And, you know, as much as I love seeing you folks show up tonight, I wish you guys would show up at a lot of other meetings that have significant impact on the trajectory of this community. Thank you.
Anyone else on the phone? All right, I did have one comment come in today who asked to be read into the record. I do have other emails that did not ask to be read in, but they will be part of the record. Chair Duncan, I'm not able to attend the Board of County Commissioners FY25 Budget Public Hearing tonight, and I am writing to give you my statement regarding the current budgeted KCSO license plate reader software for FY25. As Americans, we hold sacred our rights to be free of illegal searches and seizures as guaranteed in the Fourth Amendment of the Bill of Rights. In general, Americans, to especially include Cootney County citizens, value our privacy above all others. The current KCSO budget is requesting to spend approximately 20,000 per year for license plate reader software. That would allow up to 36 patrol vehicles already equipped with Motorola LPR cameras and possibly other manufacturers, LPRs to be used during routine patrol. The five-year contract will cost an accumulative $103,700. Per Motorola's own current LPR usage and privacy polit- policy, it states, "Use and collection of LPR data. The company authorizes collection of LPR data for the use of the company and its customers consistent with this policy. The authorized uses of the LPR system are, number one, by customers to identify or ascertain the location of a specific vehicle under circumstances when there is a legitimate commercial interest; two, by law enforcement agencies for law enforcement purposes; three, by the company to make LPR data available to customers and law enforcement agencies for the purposes above and to provide market research information to customers based on aggregate, aggregated LPR data. Examples of permitted users and uses of the system and data to include, number one, entities subject to Section 6801 and 6809 of the United States Code and state or federal statutory regulations implementing those sections; number two, entities to which information may be disclosed as a permissible pursuant to Section 2721 of Title 18 of the United States Code. The company does not make the LPR system or data it contains available to individuals for personal, non-commercial purposes." So that section was from the privacy policy. Now, back to the email. Meaning that Motorola does indeed store citizen vehicle data and distributes this data for both law enforcement and commercial purposes, US Code Title 18, Chapter 1, 2, 3, SS 2721, gives various permissions for allowing use of this personal information to include for commercial and other federal law enforcement agencies, the latter of which has continually demonstrated its abuse of American citizens' Fourth Amendment rights. They simply cannot be trusted to not violate the people of Idaho's rights to be secure in the person, places, and effects. In February of this year, Idaho House Bill 688 was introduced, which would regulate the limit and limit all data collected by LPRs in the state. Unfortunately, this bill died in committee, leaving the citizens of Idaho exposed to this unregulated data collection and invasion of privacy. Furthermore, per the attached public records request, Lieutenant Hedlund states there is no current KCSO policy on deputies using LPRs, and only refers to NCIC and ILET's training and certification conducted by Idaho State Patrol. The citizens of Cootney County deserve to know why KCSO would employ such hardware software without any current policies that have been reviewed by county attorneys or even after Motorola has been demoing the software to KCSO for several months now. This is irresponsible and professional and garners no trust of Cootney County citizens to the sheriff's office. Lastly, the Motorola LPR software vigilante has been quoted by salesman RJ Garwood, who was listed as a volunteer for Cootney County Regional Air Support Unit helicopter pilot. It should be noted that KCSO Deputy Lieutenant Mark Ellis, who's been listed as a CFO of this private corporation, manages and oversees the air unit for KCSO. On the surface, it appears that this resembles a pay-to-play relationship until proven otherwise. Lastly, it's my firmly-held belief that the citizens of Cootney County do not want to live in a surveillance state and do accept certain amounts of risk in their day-to-day lives and do not consent to trade their dangerous liberty for certain security. KCSO cannot guarantee that the data gathered by these LPRs will be secure and not sold to commercial entities, private investigators, or federal law enforcement agencies. And with the current budget overages, the cost for this software is not necessary. Please read this into the record for me. Sincerely, Dan W. D.W. Wilson. Is there anyone else that wishes, wishes to make public comment this evening, on the phone or in person?
I think our sheriff would like to-
Chair Duncan, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I have seen federal abuse, and as I'm, as your sheriff, that federal abuse will not be here in Cootney County. I think it's important that we take proactive steps in securing our privacy and fighting crime. This is a program that's been here in Cootney County for 16 years. 16 years they have had license plate readers throughout this county. Unlike the current request, the cameras that are current have 360-degree capability and run 24/7. We are asking primarily for officer safety purposes for that vehicle in front of that deputy to check that plate for a wanted person, wanted in a felony, stolen vehicle, et cetera, et cetera. This is an officer safety feature that is now available to warn the deputy of a close proximity of a hazard. The ALPR system has worked well for us without any abuse here in Cootney County. As we speak, we have a international crime network that is attacking Cootney County that's been identified through this license plate recognition software. International crime circuit right here in Cootney County. We have been able to effectively combat crime. Cootney County is growing, we are getting more and more sophisticated people who are here that want to commit crimes. You have no idea how crime is starting to percolate here in Cootney County. It's not quality of life that we see quite yet, however, it's going in that direction. I'm seeking a toolset that not only can help us fight crime, but effectively, with the limited resources, resources we have, also, and also put the safeguards in place to ensure the officer's safety and your public privacy, your privacy. Those safeguards shall be public record. We should have frequent audits where we discuss this information in front of the commissioners when we ask for these requests, and that we should be doing this every year to ensure compliance with the policy that I'm going to set forward with you today. All I'm asking for is the toolsets to get the bad guy, but I want to focus on making sure that these toolsets can't be abused. Frankly, there are some people that are running for sheriff that I would be very concerned about having access to these toolsets. Very concerned, they have no demonstrated history of ever properly handling these type of protocols and programs. That's something that's very important, so these things need to be in place. That's why I'm going to do it. There is currently no statute in Idaho governing the retention of this data. So here's my recommendation for you and for our organization, is, one, provide guidance for capture, storage, and use of the digital data obtained through these use of automated license plate readers. Utilization of the technology to capture digital license plate and images while recognizing and following established public privacy rights. There is no registered information, registered owner information that we receive from that license plate. None. We do not receive the registered owner information on that reader. Period. Gathered data and images by the APR, ALPR will only be for official use only because of potential confidential information that will not be open for public review and not subject to public records request. The technology will be used for law enforcement purposes such as identifying vehicles associated with criminal activity, terrorism activity, stolen or wanted vehicles, child molesters, human traffickers, stolen vehicles, stolen plates, and missing persons, which we use quite a bit on, on Silver, Silver Alert, on our elderly. The security of the information accessed and compliance will be managed by a communications lieutenant. The, the system will be restricted for only the collected, accessed, and used for law enforcement use only. Period. We do not share data to commercial industries. We get to choose which agencies we share data with. We have firewalls in place to not allow access to any other entities. Period. There is no commercial compilation of our plates into systems that are currently available by tow truck companies, that are currently available by other private entities that are driving around Cootney County as we speak. No personnel shall have, shall access the system without completing department training. All responses should be verified by the operator and ensure the accuracy of the information. See, it doesn't even take down states. So we have to make sure that the vehicle that we're looking for is the correct vehicle. Currently, right now, we have 65 hits a month. 65 hits a month on stolen vehicle, wanted people, vehicles wanted in a, generally a theft, and the amount that are coming from Washington is many. Spokane with a, with a woke mayor now and a woke city council will only send more people, that criminal element here. I am recommending that the dash cam data will only be retained for 24 months and then The data will be safeguarded through best practices, security procedures, and it will only be shared with the prosecutor's office and the law enforcement agencies that we want to share it with. And I will say that here, I will require any other entity, and especially a federal entity, to obtain a warrant before they have access to any of our data. If I could address, there was somebody that had a flyer up here. That flyer did not come from the sheriff's office, that flyer did not come from me. Period. So I, there's a lot of misinformation that's out there. That particular entity on that flyer is its own political entity. I am my own political entity. We do not coordinate any type of political strategy whatsoever. That would be against the law.
Any more public comment? Well, I'm sorry, Ms. Wolf and Mr. Durbin, you guys have spoken. So, anybody who's not spoken? Sure.
So my question to the sheriff is-
And your name?
How many definitions have been changed since 2020 as far as who are terrorists, who are this or that, you know? I just feel like, you know, it's just not the same anymore. It's, it's not for the people and for freedom, and what do we do when you're gone?
And, and that's why we want to put these safeguards in place. Absolutely, I agree with you 100%. We, we have to put these safeguards in place. So I, I can't agree with you more. But this, we have had audits on our system, we have conducted them, separate entities have conducted these audits, and we have had no misuse of our information. And if anybody, anybody in here can please tell us a specific event here in Cootney County where this information was misused.
All right.
Sorry about the future.
Okay, we're not, sorry.
Well, he just asked a question.
Yeah, but we're, we're not going to go back and forth. All right, so.
Commissioners, I thank you for the opportunity. I apologize for my apparel and how dirty I am. I was on a fire and whirly, got off a few hours late. I am not on duty right now. I just could not have made it home and back. My name's Nick Franson, I represent the FOP Lodge 43. The officer safety standpoint of these cameras cannot be stressed enough, however, you could ask the undersheriff. My first question is, who has access to the data and what, what's the policy in place? Because I'm not willing to get behind anything that jeopardizes my personal freedoms or anybody else's. Unfortunately, we live in a time and a place where the Big Brother, Brother State is, is just a reality. Any of those three-letter groups that want to track, I'm sure everybody in here has a cell phone, they can find us. But good data used for bad is not good. Where I see this as a incredible tool is knowing what I'm walking up to on that traffic stop and what my people need to know. It is usually the one in a career, but the, the traffic stop that you make on the wanted murderer suspect isn't usually the car that you're actually looking for. It's a pop that came from somebody passing through in the middle of the night. But that's one component of it. Every week, I get between five and 15 flyers from Spokane PD and Spokane County of drive-by shooting suspects that frequent our community. With their name and license plate, we can catch them at the border, and we can set up a plan to lower liability so we're not in pursuits with them, and we're not allowing them access to our community. We also get information about drug loads of fentanyl coming across our borders, that this will help assist us in getting that off our streets. But the other thing is, and this can't be stressed enough, let's talk about stuff like Amber Alerts and Silver Alerts, where we have missing people who are vehicle, are in vehicles that have dementia. I try to keep my head on a swivel as best I can while answering the radio and avoiding our traffic, but it, that camera system may pick up the car that has a kidnapping victim.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I thought that was my alarm.
You have a minute.
We can find and stop people from being in danger with this. It is every day, you've been in dispatch before, you know all of the ATLs we get for missing endangered people and children. We can use this system to give us the tools to find it while we're in bumper-to-bumper traffic where my eyes just can't catch all of that information. And then, quite honestly, the, that one percenter that we stopped that's coming over from Spokane that just shot three people and in a drive-by, we may be able to stop them before they victimize our community. The officer's safety implications are incredible in this, it's a great tool, but even the FOP Lodge can't and won't get behind it unless the policies are in place to protect our citizens. Because we're those two. I, I understand everybody's concern, but I really like what the sheriff's recommendations are of, this will be a yearly thing where it's reviewed, revisited by you guys every year to ensure we're doing our due diligence, that people's rights are protected, and that we can keep moving forward as long as it's safe for our community. Thank you.
All right. One more. We'll be taking a break, folks, after our last public comment.
My name is Kathy Mickles, I'm from Coeur d'Alene. And I think the, the basic issue of- And I think the basic issue of concern is that as a country, we have truly lost trust in these federal agencies. And so therefore, I think that it's a slippery slope that, so what you're proposing...
Ma'am, ma'am, address the board, please.
So what they're proposing is raising a lot more question amongst the citizens in the community at a time when we have reason to be concerned. So I would ask that you would vote against this, and then let's have another discussion about this. But I think we should vote no on this because if we had had time, this room would have been packed with people who would have said, "We're not willing to take the risk." And so I'd ask you to vote no.
Could I address some of...
This has the good intentions.
I'd like to address some of your comments. I agree with you 1,000% about some of the abuses that we read about, especially at the federal level. And that's why it's so important that people be engaged at the local level.
I agree.
This issue has been around for months, believe it or not. And, you know, one of the disappointments as a new county commissioner, the junior one on this board, is that we have so many meetings, and fortunately, they are video-recorded. We have so many meetings where so few people show up.
I agree.
And so the time actually has been a couple of months to really talk about this. And the reason you're hearing about it now is because somebody somehow got word of it just recently and posted something. And so what we are now faced with is, no, I don't want it. But a lot of time has gone by where we could have had those discussions. So I would encourage you and everyone else in this room, anyone else watching at home, contact me.
I think we need to be, we need to be better at that, and I'm guilty of that because I came from a state, I came from 50 miles outside of Seattle, and I've been here about three years. And since I've moved here, I've thought, we worked so hard in the state of Washington to not have what happened, happened. And so we moved here, and I got to admit, I became, oh, this is so great. We're free here.
A lot of people think that.
And, you know, and then all of a sudden you go, well, wait a minute. And so I'm guilty of that. And I didn't want to have to get involved at the level that I was involved in in Washington State. But obviously, it was an error my part. But I think that people need to wake up because for those of us who came here from other areas, we need to work as hard as we did there as we are would here.
Well, you know, I think I speak for the other two board members that if you call their number, they're going to pick up.
I believe you would.
I will.
I know you would.
My extension goes directly to my cellphone. And the same thing with our legislators. You know, this is a much bigger issue to be concerned about, and it shouldn't be, it shouldn't start and it shouldn't end in this room tonight.
I agree.
So, you know, I think once you start to talk with people and you understand their thought processes and their concerns, I think at the very least, you're going to have a much greater comfort level about the elected officials in this county and at the state level in this region.
Well, it's a principle. This idea of, I'm just going to give my trust, my, to these people, that it's like, that's too big of a trust for me to give because people in those positions have betrayed me.
Well, some of the people in the room who have been promoting this evening, they have access to me. She's sitting right back there. She put her arm up. She knows who I am. She could have contacted me when she knew about this and said, hey, Bruce, what is your policy on this? What exactly is going on? Same with the other gentleman that pointed me out earlier in his comment, but they don't contact us. Did any of them contact the sheriff to talk to him about this policy and what's going on?
Okay, stop, stop. Okay, we're gonna, all right, hang on, folks.
But when you have a commissioner who's sitting here putting down the citizens, and yet we can't respond?
Okay, I'm sorry, no. So we are going to take a 10-minute recess right now. We'll 8:05.
Lastly, could I say, would you please, in good faith because of what we're discussing here tonight, would you please postpone this and not vote for this? And let's have this discussion on another time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we'll come back in 10 minutes.
Please enter your PIN, follow. Thank you. There are two participants in the conference. Please announce yourself.
Carleen Behringer.
Sorry we took a little bit longer. I should always know that. All right, I think that we are ready to end public testimony, so we, I don't know that we actually need a motion in this part.
I'll make one, just to make it official. Are we sure no one else has anything else to say? Okay, well, I'm.
Okay.
All right.
Turn on the mic.
Yeah, you go turn on the mic. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, so again, back on the subject of license plate readers, I just wanted to, I wasn't really planning on speaking tonight, but I just wanted to comment a bit on what the sheriff had said. So, you know, they are a want, of course. You know, every police officer wants more and more technology to make their job easier. I did the job myself for many years and, you know, from back in the day when we didn't have MDTs in the cars, we had to call in plates. And somehow we made it home every night, you know, even with those restrictions. So, you know, license plate readers and this type of technology, it leads to facial recognition capabilities. And beyond that, then we've got stingrays where they're able to track your, your cellphone and where you are specifically at any given moment. And of course, that all makes their jobs easier, right? The Fourth Amendment notwithstanding. But, you know, necessity is the plea of tyrants. You know, we learned this in government in high school. So, I'm just asking you guys to reconsider at least this particular technology. I don't have a problem with the sheriff's department, but I do have the problem of knowing in the wrong hands what this could be used for, right? Or it's also a slippery slope. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else who's not spoken already? All right, come on up.
After listening to the arguments and talking to Bob and my friend in the back there, and, and I'm thinking I might be inclined to support these cameras. I do not trust my federal government whatsoever. They're illegitimate, they're communist, they're persecuting their political enemies. We have political prisoners in this country, and I don't trust the feds at all. But if this is gonna keep somebody from coming from Spokane and killing my wife and, or robbing us, I think there's pros and cons. I'm concerned about the feds using this in the next lockdown, so I don't know. I, I think I'm leaning towards it, but I'm, I'm not 100% sure on that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else on the telephone? Okay. It looks like Thursday, September 5th at 1:00 PM is the Impact Fee meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. All right, with that, I'll take a moment.
A move that we end, public testimony for the FY25 budget hearing pursuant to Idaho Code 31-1605.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Sheriff Duncan?
Aye. All right. We are now in deliberations, and what I will do is ask Commissioner Brooks, since this is his last budget hearing as a county commissioner, thank you for your service. Would you like to go first?
No.
Okay.
Well, do you want to go through one item at a time and?
Yeah, we can, we can totally do that.
You know, as far as Aquifer protection goes, I think it makes sense. They've actually reduced their budget a little bit. It's obviously an extremely important component of this community and its overall health. And, you know, I kind of feel like in some respects, you know, there's a lot more that we should be doing to protect the Aquifer. And I definitely look forward to working with folks to figure out those ways because we dodged a bullet when that diesel truck tipped over and started spilling that diesel. And we cannot allow these recharge areas to be disruptive. And there's actually a story that I heard about how a dam was overflowing or something, and they started punching holes in the ground, and Protozoa got into the Aquifer, and people started getting sick just because of that. And so that's how fragile these things can be. And, you know, we are custodians in a way. This board plays an important role, and at the very least, we have a plat, a platform to inform the public of what's going on. And so I'm supportive of this budget.
Okay, Bill?
I'm supportive of the Aquifer. You know, everything we talked about, and also the EMS, but I don't support our budget in general.
Okay, so yes, I would support the Aquifer budget and the EMS budget as well.
We can go through motions on that and then make our statements on the.
Well, it's a separate item. I mean, H is deliberations and then I is the approval, so.
Okay, well, the Cootney County budget, I actually have a statement. I want to turn it in, but I'd also like to read it for folks. First, I'd like to thank Brandy Falcon, our finance director, Keith Taylor, our deputy finance director, Aero Gidney, our senior accountant, and of course, Jennifer Locke, our county clerk, for all the countless hours that you put in helping us elected officials put together this budget. Thank you. The Cootney County FY2025 budget is a good budget, I believe. It's not the budget I wanted, but it's a good budget, especially when you look at other taxing districts, like other counties in Idaho and even cities here in Cootney County, that are looking to not only take the full 3%, but in addition, forgone taxes. This is a tax that was not taken in previous fiscal years, but can be recaptured in a future year if there's a budget shortfall. For example, if a district only took 2% one year out of a 3% maximum, and later they need that 1%, then it can be captured in a future year as a forgone tax, which means the tax rate will be 4%. This year, Cootney County is looking at about a 2% increase or $1.2 million roughly. The good news, and one county citizen should be proud of, is that our operating budget actually went down by $27,000 for FY25. The year before it only went up a mere $38,000. This out of a roughly $110 million budget. I believe it's safe to say that one of the biggest issues for citizens with tax dollars, their tax dollars, is that they don't want their money wasted on government excess and bloat. I concur. So where is the money going if not operations? We invested that 2% increase into recruiting and retaining our staff. About $700,000 of that money went toward an annual step, which is like an annual adjustment found on a time and grade pay scale. And about $1.7 million went toward a 2.5% COLA, which is actually less than a lot of the other surrounding jurisdictions, cost of living adjustment. This combined amount, 2.4 million, far exceeds the ask from the county citizens to attract and retain qualified talent. Most of that money went toward public safety, which includes our sheriff's office, the courts, and our prosecuting attorney staff. Attracting and retaining high-performing staff will save county taxpayers more money in the long run compared to losing the high-performing staff members, needing more staff to supplement low performers, and being in a perpetual state of hiring and training. Top-notch managers know this to be true, and we should be practicing it here. While Cootney County does have some issues with inefficiencies, which present opportunities for lowering operating costs, the biggest challenge has been the severe underfunding of positions, primarily in public safety, that has led to the county being the destination jurisdiction to get one start in public safety, but to quickly move on to other jurisdictions for higher pay. This vicious cycle drives some of our best talent away from the county and toward other jurisdictions. We addressed this issue last year by giving our sheriff's patrol deputies a pay raise to 3% below Coeur d'Alene Police Department. We stopped the attrition, the, of losing these patrol deputies, and now are beginning to fill our ranks with these patrol deputies. And that, by the way, was just the beginning. We had to make some expensive mid-year pay adjustments to fix attrition and an inability to fill mission-critical positions within public safety. The first was our 911 system, which was so badly neglected for many years by the BOCC, and yes, I say that, that if we had lost just one more dispatcher, we would not be able to cover a shift. Folks, I'm not going to allow you to call up 911 and get a recorded message. And I've actually had people tell me they did get recorded messages because we had so few people working to answer your calls. By increasing, by increasing the pay to equal, not exceeding, to equal that of Spokane's dispatch, we not only stopped the resignations, we received so many applications from qualified candidates that we actually paused accepting new applications. I'm glad to report that we fixed this issue, certainly for the time being. For the prosecutor's office, we were down five positions, 20% vacancy in prosecutors. We could not fill positions, and the office was on the verge of not being able to prosecute crime like this community would want and expect. If it wasn't for our fine prosecuting attorney, Stanley Mortensen, who's sitting over there, he's got a tie and a jacket on, thank you, taking on cases himself, it would be greater than 20% vacancy. We fixed that. And then there is the jail. We have failed our jail inspection continuously for many, many years. The physical capacity of the Cootney County Jail is 451 inmates. The legal capacity is only 361 inmates. Why is the legal capacity 90 inmates lower? 90 inmates lower than what the jail can hold? Because we cannot hire enough deputies to properly staff our jail. That's why we fail these inspections. We were losing jail deputies as fast, and in some cases faster, than we could actually find qualified candidates to replace them. One of the main reasons for this is because of pay. We believe that we have fixed most of this issue, pay along with closely working with our sheriff, which him and myself have had many discussions. We believe there is a pathway toward fixing this staffing issue and hopefully passing our jail inspection in the next couple of years. That will be quite a landmark for this county. Those mid-year adjustments we granted for public safety were $1.35 million, all invested in staff out of a total of $2.3 million mid-year adjustments after we adopted, this is after we already adopted the FY2024 budget. Now that we have addressed many of the most pressing staffing issues within the county, I want to strongly discourage my contemporaries and other elected officials and department heads from bringing forth and approving such mid-year changes unless they are both budget-neutral during FY25 and subsequent budget years. There's a little trick that goes on in the county. We get requests to add staff mid-year. If we approve it mid-year, guess what? It automatically goes into the next year's budget. We have no control over that at that point. We've approved it mid-year. We need to stop that practice. I say this because next year we will have many budgetary challenges. And you in this audience and at home need to know that. To put this into perspective, most of the open positions for jail deputies are only funded at 50%, like Ms. Falcon said earlier tonight, to achieve the lower tax rate. We reduced the amount that we were, that we could capture for these salaries by 50% so we could have a lower tax rate this year for you. But there, there's a catch that comes with that. Because if we fill these positions in the next 12 months, we're going to be short $1.9 million or some number below that, depending on how many people we hire, because we've adjusted the pay and we're attracting people. So that's going to be a shortfall that we're going to have to address. Our jail medical contract came in at $1.2 million greater than expected this year, than what we budgeted. This is a service by law that we must provide. This year, we are fortunate to be able to manage to it, but next year, we will need an additional $1.2 million and possibly more for the following contract. We have to provide these healthcare services to these inmates, whether we want to or not, we have to, to cover that difference. But that's not all. If we are to maintain an annual step for employees, then we will likely need another $1.1 million. Combined these three issues, and like I said, this is for retention of people who are not problem employees. One write-up, you do not get your step. One write-up. That was something that I was very adamant about last year, if we were going to increase these, offer steps to employees. Let's make room for a high performer that wants to come in and do a good job. They work for you. They work for you. Combined, these three issues add up to $4.2 million in additional revenue that we're going to need, all based on staffing and the jail medical contract. If we increase taxes for FY 26, 3%, that only adds up to about $1.7, maybe a little bit more dollars, which will make us about $2.5 million short. So how do we fix this? First, we need to optimize processes and hopefully reduce the need to add staff for a growing county. I believe that we can actually decrease some staffing needs by developing more efficient ways to serve the citizens of this county. It's something I'm working on right now with senior managers, and I will keep you informed of what I'm able to accomplish in that area. Just simple flowcharting and reporting of how efficient we are. Just little things like that can actually make a big difference. Second, it will take courage from our elected officials to explain the challenges the county faces, excuse me, be transparent with the issues and explain where the money is needed and being spent. I have found that when you know what the problems are and we explain exactly where that money is going to go, people are much more receptive to what we have to do to provide these service levels for you. And so that's my promise to you. You can expect roughly 2/3 of our budget to go toward public safety in one way or another. And as the population grows, so too will the demand for more government. The single biggest driver behind the growth of government here and its need for taxation is the population of growth occurring in our county. That's just the reality of it. That's the way the system works. And I encourage any one of you in this audience to work with me on ways that we can manage that growth so we don't have to put that burden on citizens here to pay for that growth, if we can manage it more effectively. And that's one of the things I'm working on with the cities. It'd be great if we could try to join our comp plans together and start looking at what this community is going to look like as a whole in the future. Because the growth here is what is driving your budget, the emergency medical services, people moving here. You have more calls for service. It's just a simple, it's simple math. So with that, I believe we do have a good budget this year and certainly compared to the other taxing jurisdictions. And I am happy to discuss any last-minute details before moving to a vote. Thank you all.
All right, Bill?
Sure. The general budget of the county, it's like any budget of any place. Number one, things get done here because of the people who work here. They don't get done because of the programs we have. They don't get done because of the buildings we have. They get done because of the people who work here. And during my short tenure, six years now, it'll be five and a half, we haven't had very good pay and hasn't been commensurate with what these people do. And we've tried to correct that last year. And what we found was, as soon as we got up to where everybody else was, we started getting applications. We started filling positions. And the work gets done. So if you have, you know, all these things, you have programs and desks and computers and no people, you get nothing done. Now, COLA, Cost of Living Allowance, is not a raise. It's to try to keep up with the cost of living. And we all know what has happened to all of us. I don't care who you are in the last couple of years. It's been brutal. And especially for people who are in the lower income levels. I'm talking anybody under $50,000 is really hurting right now with the cost of gas, the cost of food, you know, all those things. And we can't keep up with that, but we can try. Now, our HR department is, Human Resource Department is tasked with coming up with a number as far as what we should do percent-wise for COLA. And they said 3.5%. And I agree with that. And that was the number that I came up with. And I believe that's an absolute minimum. If we do anything less than that, what happens is we start falling behind again. And if we fall behind again, we're just going to have to make it up someplace up in the future. And that's a, we don't want to do that. We want to reward good work. We want to let our employees know that we're doing the best we can to keep up. And we don't want to balance our budget at the expense of our employees. They're already taking a pretty big hit in terms of their insurance is going up. Their benefits are going down. And that's just, that's happening to everybody. But let's not do it. So I just can't vote for that cheap COLA, and I won't do it. The budget is much more complex than that. But if you don't take care of the fundamental things, the rest of it's just window dressing.
I also believe that this is a fairly good budget. Those positions that are funded at 50%, I do encourage those departments to continue to hire for those because the overtime goes down. So there's a little bit of a trade-off. We won't be using so much overtime when we get the full-time equivalents. So it's not completely dire. Jail overcrowding is an issue, and we usually have between 60 and 100 state inmates any given time. So if the state would take all their inmates, we'd be much, much happier position. As far as the COLA goes, I think that we have a path forward where we're going to take in the future several different CPIs and maybe take a, an average of those. So the commissioners started that discussion, and I think we'll keep on with that. So COLA helps us keep up with the market. And every three years, we have a wage study. So in our FY 25 budget, we have funded a wage study. So we will know this spring how close we are to market for our area. And that's pretty important. So we did talk about a 1% COLA, and I was not sure that that was going to get us, keep us in line enough where we didn't have to take a 3% tax increase next year to raise those wages enough to keep up with the, with the local market. So our benefits, medical benefits are actually going up. We have an onsite clinic that just opened in July. So our employees and any of their family members who are on our medical program will be able to have this. A lot of people couldn't find primary care providers, so this becomes that for the employees. And what it ends up doing is probably saving our projections about $1 million a year. And so we're going to keep a close eye on that and look at that. So saving, you know, $1 million a year by having this clinic where folks can not take that much time off work and be able to get in and be seen right away, not spend so much time sick because they're getting treated sooner for lesser ailments than waiting months and even years sometimes where then now you're in catastrophic and now you're going to be taking FMLA and a lot of time off. So I'm very excited to see that, that benefit. People first, I've said that since I, since I got here. We're a service organization and a monopoly for much of that service. I can't be at home and say, you know, the deputies made me upset. I'm going to call Coeur d'Alene City to come out and take my police report. Doesn't work that way. Community development, I'm in the county. I don't get to call City of Post Falls and say, hey, can I please have a building permit? So I want to make sure that we're providing the best possible service here to our Cootney County residents for the lowest cost. It's a balancing act. And again, making sure that our people are able to stay here at the county just benefits our citizens. You want that longevity, you want that knowledge, and it just makes for better service. The labor shortage has hurt our nation, and our county is absolutely no, no exception, so. There's a few things that I want to talk about potentially putting off till next year. When I go through a budget, I look at, you know, I ask myself these questions and I ask other departments these questions. What do you need to accomplish your task? Sorry. What are the consequences for not funding this? What work is not being done? Can it be done with less? What is the return on investment? And what is the liability if we don't do what they ask us for? So when I look at that, I've identified just a few things that would add up to approximately $200,000 that would not reduce your taxes, but it would go towards that jail medical deficit. And I am willing to just go down the list and do it. I'm not looking to debate. If somebody wants to support me, they can say yes or no. If they don't, then we'll, we'll just move on. We have non-capital software, and this is just a really small reduction, but it's $1,500 on the BOCC level. And insurance deductible, there's a line item that's $27,000, $21,000. ICRAIM had raised our deductible at one point, or they were talking about it. And that was to cover three, the deductible for three vehicle crashes. But now we can reduce that line to $7,500. That will actually cover five vehicle crashes because that's $1,500 each now that ICRAIM came out with a solid number. So that would be a $13,500 savings. License plate readers, I think that there is a value in that. I think that if I'm not going to get supported for cutting those this year, then what I would like to do is have a, another meeting where the policy can be brought forward, where a lot of the concerns that were expressed tonight could be addressed and have that conversation. So when we approve the budget, that's not spending authority, that's budget authority. So there's a lot of things that the elected officials and departments still have to come before the BOCC for the spending authority. So I just, I want to make that clear. We've got $400,000 in radios, which is, they were on a really good plan to get everybody caught up. But I think that if we reduce that by 100,000, we'll just know that next year we'll have to, you know, increase that line item. And then there's the detention response team, and that is a $30,000 ask that I would ask to be reduced to 15,000. They do have some real needs in that area. Again, there's one more that's not. It doesn't affect any tax dollars because it is a restricted fund. But I just have to say, I've said it earlier this year, the side-by-side for 911, I'm just not seeing the value in the $60,000 that, because they want to go up once a month during the winter. We have, I know at least two other tracked vehicles in the county that could be used for that purpose, and they could work out, you know, in agreements. Might be less convenient. I also have had several members of the public volunteer there, you know, side-by-sides. It comes with its own issue. So, and then there's other, one other A-budget personnel thing that we can handle in September that would loan about, or transfer from that department over to the jail medical. So for a total of about $201,000. So if anybody wants to second that, that's great. If they don't, I think overall it's a pretty, pretty good budget. The jail medical was distressing though because I, I asked for money to be kept in there and it wasn't. So here we are. And I think that's all I got.
So it doesn't affect the tax rate? What you're talking about is just not, I mean, we, even if we kept the money there, we could shift it even afterwards. It doesn't even matter if we do it tonight. As far as the license plate readers go, are you against them or for funding them next year?
I am for, I wrote all these things down, for a policy, for the frequent audits, for the exact guarantee of where this data is going and who controls the data. I would like to know specifically what Motorola has access to and if there's anything that we can prevent them from doing that. I like the yearly review idea. So I, I'm not, as one of the deputies pointed out earlier. If it can save one life, then it might be worth it. However, this is pretty risky, and so I would want all those questions to be answered before I would support it fully.
See, this is where, you know, I have a hard time sometimes understanding what you stand for. Okay? Because all these questions are great questions. But how come they weren't asked on May 21 in 2019 when this pilot program was started? It's been in business for five years now, roughly. In May 21, 2019, in a business meeting, FY 2019, Operation Stone Garden Operations Order and Budget, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Bureau of Customs and Border Protection Resource Management Office, KCSO. Commissioner Duncan expressed her reservations about the use of automatic license plate readers, but it substantially withdrew them after KCSO Lieutenant Matthew McFarland and Information Technology Network Administrator Grant Kinsey further explained the procedures in place to prevent abuse of the device. Folks, that car is out in the parking lot right now. It's been working for several years. These questions come up tonight at a budget hearing? Where was this stuff before?
Well, I will use what you have said many times. I, just being the new commissioner, I mean, how did I know? I'm only good at the information that was given to me at that time. And, you know, who knows where my mindset was back then? But I was trusting those people who came forward with it. So I would love to see then if Motorola's been providing this the whole time. Where has the data been going?
You haven't followed up once since then. You've never asked how effective this device is? Well, it's true. Okay, it's true. No, I'm not. I'm pointing out the reality of it.
Okay, so hold on.
You don't want this, and maybe that's why she changed her mind because she thinks for us.
Okay, sorry, guys. I got to keep this to deliberations only. So what else would you like to bash me about from my future, my past decisions?
It's not about bashing.
No, it is, Bruce.
It's the fact that you wait until the 11th hour. Okay, this stuff, we've been talking about this for months.
And I have, I have,
She said no for us. You've got a problem verbally molesting women like you give them fair props.
Jim, please, please. I don't want to have to ask you to leave. So that's fine. I am now changing my mind. I think women are allowed to change their minds. And I would like more information. So I'm not saying 100% no. What I'm saying is, I think a lot of these issues that were brought up tonight, and frankly, I haven't had a lot of support. I get overruled a lot when it comes to many of these issues. And that's fine. That's part of the nature of our government, and I'm not complaining about it. So a lot of stuff, I don't actually bring up to the fullest extent that I would had I believed that I would be listened to and gain support, so.
Well, just, just so, I, so, you know, the reality is that when this, when I first saw this on the budget, I actually went to the sheriff and the undersheriff. And undersheriff Nelson, I'm sure you can attest to this. I said, this is not a good idea. I talked to the sheriff about, what's your destruction policy? And, you know, there isn't one. The state wouldn't pass one. And so the whole point about this is that, you know, I am against the surveillance state. But one of the things that got me involved in politics is the fact that I wanted to make sure that we had a sheriff who was accountable to the people and who would listen. And so we talked about that.
Folks, please.
We talked about that, and he explained, rather convincingly, how this toolset can be used to make this community safer. And I explained that I'm concerned about the civil liberties, And I'm, I explained that I'm concerned about the civil liberties, the what can this data be used for in nefarious purposes? Because we're watching that already at other levels.
So let me ask you this. Do you disagree that you want it to come before another meeting for contract approval and, and policy approval and all of that stuff?
I believe that we should keep it in the budget, knowing that at any point in time we can demand and want to see more stuff. These contracts have what's called an appropriations clause. If we don't fund it, they don't renew. And I am more of the opinion that, you know, already we've demonstrated some capacity to make a difference in this community. I would definitely like to see a, a very solid destruction policy or, or data retention policy. I want that to be shared with the community. If the sheriff is open to it, and one of the things that he's pretty good at doing is holding these town halls and answering these questions for people. If he's willing to do that on a quarterly or semi-annual basis and we can look at this project and see actually what it has done. You know, I hear about cost benefit. Well, you know, we know what the cost is and we know what the potential abuse is. Do we know what the benefit is to the community? Now, we do have some data with it because this, this one system has been in place for, I presume, about five, four, four to five years. But to just say no for the sake of saying no or because, you know, we have people who have been rallied into this, you know, the decision is just to keep the money in the budget. The decision is not to approve it. They asked for it. I've talked with the sheriff a lot about how we can do this. You know, he's very open to it. He discussed that destruction or retention policy tonight. There wasn't one and there's no requirement to have one. And quite honestly, having a retention policy increases the liability to the county. Because as you know, Commissioner Duncan and Commissioner Brooks, we had an oopsie moment with some data that wasn't destroyed and it ended up becoming a problem a little bit. So, you know, by having a, a retention policy, we increase our liability, but in exchange for that, we ensure that the data is not abused and retained forever or it could possibly be abused and used against somebody. These things have been around and discussed, or we could have discussed for the last couple of months. I've been talking with the sheriff about it because I do believe this is a big issue for this community. But I think at the very least, we ought to at least have a discussion of what the heck this thing could possibly do for us. And if the community says, sorry sheriff, that's not good enough, then I am right there the first person to say we need to defund it. But we've had this program in place for four, five years now.
I don't think to this extent where all these are. I mean, was it one, one patrol vehicle?
But that was the test case and there was never any follow-up on it by this board, by any member of this board. And that's my point, is that if we don't follow up on the things that we approve and we don't ask these questions either before, during, or after, then what is the point? And so when this came up, as a junior commissioner, I brought it up to the undersheriff and the sheriff and I said, I got a problem with this. You know, I don't have a problem with it if we have good policy in place because that's what this board is supposed to do and that we can demonstrate to the public that there is a legitimate benefit to it. But to say no for the sake of saying no.
I'm not saying no for the sake of saying no. I'm not sure where you're getting that.
I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that people in general.
It's in the budget for this year.
Yes.
And we need to vote on that.
Yes, thank you. If you'd like to make a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed budget.
It has to be a little bit more technical.
Yeah, do you want to go through each one individually?
We have to.
Okay. So I move that the board fix and determine the Alcoa Fair Protection District FY 25 budget.
Alcoa Fair Budget?
Yes.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Sheriff Duncan?
Aye. All right. And EMS?
I move that the board fix and determine the Cootney County Emergency Medical Services System FY 25 budget.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Sheriff Duncan?
Aye.
And I move that the board fix and determine the Cootney County FY 25 budget with the understanding that we can make some changes later, but we are approving it as it is, as it was published at this point.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Nay.
Commissioner Matarri?
Aye.
Sheriff Duncan?
Aye. All right, folks, thanks for getting through that with us. 8:56, meeting adjourned.
Can I ask one quick clarifying question?